Thank you.
I'm gonna put these down here and I'm gonna do it all from the top. Looks like we're all in our places and so ready to start and hit the road running, so would you please join me standing for our nation's flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence, thank you. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Our first item this morning is a presentation given by the District Attorney's Office to declare May 25th as National Missing Children's Day in Tulare County. Welcome District Attorney Phil Clientz, always a pleasure to have you in our chambers this morning, thank you for being here.
Morning Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I appreciate the Board taking the time to consider our motion for proclamation recognizing May 25th as National Missing Children's Day. This started some time ago in 1979, a young child was on his way to school in New York, was abducted, never heard from again. And in 1984, President Reagan signed into law the National Missing Children's Act. And so we've been trying to recognize this this year, especially under a campaign, it's basically called Take 25. I delivered some packets to the Board members this morning, if you'll have opportunity to look through those. But what we're encouraging parents and guardians to do is to simply take 25 minutes a day and sit down with their children and discuss safety. There's so many threats to them, you know, there's threats on the streets, there's violence, there's threats on the internet, sexual exploitation, but there's always that threat of abduction. And about 800,000 children a year are taken and quite a few of those never return, never heard from again, so it is important. So we are advocating this Take 25 campaign. In concurrence with that, this Saturday, the Sheriff and I are sponsoring a children's safety fair and the Board, I believe, is going to be represented by Supervisor Cox there, and obviously everyone else is invited to come there. And we're having all kinds of activities for kids, I've outlined some of those, we're having everything from water safety demonstrations, the SWAT team, the K-9 team's gonna be there, we're gonna be talking to them about a lot of safety issues for the parents and the children. And we're gonna make it a fun thing. There's a ticket, a folder that they're gonna be giving out, and if they go to all the booths, they'll get stamps on that and they'll be able to go in then to Adventure Park and receive free rides or discounted activities there. So we're gonna make it a good fun event, it's 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock this Saturday, Kayjug is gonna be there with some live feeds also. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions?
I don't know if there's any question, any comments by Board members? If not, I have a proclamation and Phil, you've already given some of the data to us, but I just wanted to add that in this proclamation, there's a recognition that more than 2,000 children are reported missing to law enforcement agencies each day, more than 50,000 children will be victims of non-family abductions each year. And the National Missing Children's Day is a time to remember those children who are missing and give hope to their families, provide a day for communities to raise public awareness concerning the issue of missing children, and to realize that children are our citizens of tomorrow, are linked to the future, and are nation's most valuable assets. And their protection and safety must be one of our highest priorities. So therefore be resolved, the Board Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2010, as National Missing Children's Day in Tulare County and call upon local government, law enforcement, schools, community-based organizations, families, and concerned citizens to help educate, protect our children, and keep them safe from abduction and exploitation. Signed by the Board. So if you can... This is an action item to declare the proclamation, so...
I'll move approval.
Seconded at...
A motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, thank you very much. And that will bring us to some items, we're gonna handle them two, three, and actually there's actually one that was not on our agenda for today, but there are several teams in Supervisor Ashida's district that are Valley Champions, you know, this started with Dinuba High School football team, and not to be outdone, but District One has tried to do that. He's had several Valley Championship teams in his district, and so we're very pleased to honor those teams this morning. And I will turn this over at this time to Supervisor Ashida.
Good morning, it is my pleasure this morning to present these awards to our outstanding athletes in Tulare County. And we're gonna begin today with Strathmore Girls Soccer, and if they would join me up here in the well and their coach? Hector Gonzalez.
Good morning.
Well, they're coming up here, they won the Division VI California Interscholastic Federation Central Section Championship, and I don't want any moans and groans, but they beat Farmersville High School Aztecs 4 to 2 on February 24th. This team ended its season with 17 wins, 3 losses, and 2 ties. And Hector Gonzalez has been working on this program and leading his team to this section title, and while not only do they emphasize the athletic abilities of the team, they also emphasize the athletic, excuse me, the academic side of being a team member. So now therefore be it proclaimed that Tulare County Board of Supervisors hereby honors the Strathmore High School Girls Soccer Team for winning the 2010 Central Section Division VI Valley Championships, so congratulations. Now we had the pleasure of having Dinuba up here many times this year, but we have three presentations just to Strathmore High School today. So if the tennis team would join me up in the well, Jim? This is also a Division VI Championship, on October 27th, the Strathmore High School Girls Tennis Team beat McFarland to claim the 2009 Central Section Division Championship. It ended the season with 15 wins and I guess 2 losses. Now this is Coach Jim, who's been melting, who has been the coach for the last four years, and has developed this team into champions with pride and a winning attitude. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor the Strathmore High School Girls Tennis Team for winning the 2009 Central Division VI Valley Championships, so congratulations. There's nothing like high school rivalry, you know, I think Strathmore is getting more proclamations than Dinuba. If we could have the boys soccer team and the coach, please? Yes, excuse me, boys tennis. If the coach and the team could join me, please? Technical difficulty here. You what? Oh, it is.
Thank you, Mike.
Strathmore High School Boys Tennis Team also beat McFarland, they must have a very good team too, to claim the 2009 Central Section Division VI Valley Championship. This win marks the first CIF Valley Championship title held by the Strathmore High School Boys Tennis Team in more than 20 years. And this just happened recently, so you were a late addition. And I understand that our baseball team in Strathmore is in line to potentially win another Valley Championship.
All right, just stay on script, shall we?
Our alumnus and head coach Derek Knudsen took over the program, and it looks like we have a very promising future, and I saw Derek's father out in the crowd, who I went to high school with, and I guess that was many, many years ago. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Tulare County Board of Supervisors hereby honors Strathmore High School Boys Tennis Team for winning the 2009 Central Section Division VI Valley Championship. And like I said, it's been 20 years, and thank you very much, Darryl, for coaching these kids, and congratulations to all of the winners.
You have to be able to stand.
Thank you very much.
Now we have another District One group of champions, and this is the Farmersville High School Boys Soccer Team, if you could please join me with your coach. And they are the Division VI California Interscholastic Federation Central Section High School Soccer Team. And on February 22nd, the Farmersville High School Boys Soccer Team beat Mendota High School for the title. This one marks the third time they've won the Valley Championship in the past 11 years, and that's quite an accomplishment. The team went 22, excuse me, 28, 2 and 3 this year. And I think there's a lot of thanks that goes to the coach, he's done an outstanding job, he took over in 1996, excuse me, 1999, and Michael Jordan's team has won 212 wins, 62 losses, with only 18 ties, with nine playoff appearances and eight league titles, so this is quite a group and you have quite a coach, so thank you very much and congratulations.
Well, let us add our congratulations to all of you, and thanks for being here this morning. I know you don't wanna get back to school, but that's the requirements, you do have to go back to school, I don't think you're ready to get out yet, but thanks for being here today, and it's really great to be able to honor our athletes and scholars in this, in our facilities here today, it's wonderful, and even if it was all District One, it's still great to have great teams in Tulare County, and congratulations to all of you. I don't know if any of the members wanna comment or say anything?
Yeah, you know, I just would like to say congratulations to everyone, and you know, all five of us represent different districts up here, but regardless of us representing different districts and whether or not you live within our district, we're all proud of you, and we appreciate all the time that you put in, we know that it's a part of school, but we also know that students who participate in athletics are more likely to attend school and graduate, so we applaud you for doing that and thank you all for being here this morning.
I'll just add very little that, you know, it's exciting to see young people participating in the sports, and I'm gonna have to call my superintendent here in Visalia and see what, you know, what leagues our teams here locally want so I can bring them in, but it is great to see, I appreciate Supervisor Ashida for taking initiative to bring all the young people in so that we can recognize you because you do deserve recognition, good job.
Yeah, I'd like to just thank everybody too for showing up, I know Alan appreciates it because it's the first time he's ever taken a picture in a championship. Belated recognition. But no, congratulations, everybody, and I know that a lot of these kids, I know personally the Browns back there, the Brown sisters, and of course I know they're involved in FFA as well as their sports and keeping their grades up, so a lot of these kids are involved in a lot of other stuff besides their athletics, so congratulations, everybody, you did, there they are. They just, we just finished the Porterville Fair and of course they were involved there, so hey, thanks to everybody, what a great job, and we're very proud of all of you, thank you.
I think the last thing I wanna say to this group is that we do pay attention to what you're doing in the community, and we do appreciate what you do in the community, so thank you very much.
One last thing before I give you all a chance to, small break to take off, but Supervisor Ashida once pointed out to me, it's kind of odd, I think, but all five of the Board Supervisor members grew up in the communities that we represent, each of us played sports in those communities, and so I don't know how frequently that happens, but that's kind of an interesting little statistic, so you too might grow up and be a county supervisor one day. So thank you all for being here, and I will give you all a little break so you can get back to your classrooms, which I know you're just dying to do.
And you don't even have to grow up to be a supervisor either.
That's true. Stole my line. All right, this time, if you, well, you guys are welcome to take off and leave, but we're gonna have public comments, anybody wishing to address this this morning on matters which are not within our today's agenda but on our, within our jurisdiction, welcome to come forward at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to notice, or note a typographical error essentially on item two, teams, tennis teams, instead of tennis team, there were two, correct?
It was actually four teams, yeah.
From Strathmore, there were two tennis teams?
Three teams in Strathmore and one in Farmersville. Yeah, we had a late addition there.
Had added the second such a big team.
That's right, emergency item. Yeah, urgency. All right, I have Mr. Clum here this morning, welcome sir.
Good morning. Peter Clum, 45638, South Fork Drive, Three Rivers, California. Perhaps you are not aware that RMA denied our request to correct the executive summary RDEIR. I'm here this morning to ask you to direct...
Pull the mic down.
There you go. Can you hear now?
Yes, it's better, thank you.
To direct RMA to reverse that decision, make the corrected copy available to the public, and restart the public comment period. I encourage you to ask questions at the end of my comments, as I know you care about public disclosure and the public's right to comment. I have provided each of you with a seven-page packet. The purpose of the executive summary is to provide the decision-makers and the public with an overview of the general plan and RDEIR. The California Environmental Quality Act guidelines state, this summary shall identify: Number one, each significant effect with proposed mitigation measures and alternatives that would reduce or avoid that effect. Number two, areas of controversy known to the lead agency including issues raised by agencies and the public. And number three, issues to be resolved, including the choice among alternatives and whether or how to mitigate these significant effects. These are mandatory content requirements. The summary leaves out 80% of the mandatory content requirement. Failure to correct the executive summary constitutes a clear-cut violation of CECL's public information and disclosure requirements. If RMA does not correct the executive summary to contain the mandatory content requirements, what will you as decision-makers and the public rely on for the overview? If not corrected and recirculated with a new comment period, the executive summary's fundamental defects will, upon judicial review, in my opinion, require RMA to start this whole process over. And then I would ask if anyone has any questions?
I don't have a question, but we're gonna need a little time to digest this, so we can't give you an answer today.
Well, nor could we take, we cannot take action on items that are on our agenda today, but we will refer to matters...
And I understand.
This matter will be referred to our County Council and RMA Department, so thank you for your comments.
Very well. I wanna add one other thing, is I appreciate the fact that you went over our general plan. It's very important to the public, people like you that take the interest to study what we've done, so thank you.
Very well, and my concern, you know, it's not so much about me as an individual, it's obviously my background is different, but it's for the public at large, not the individual, and that's where the overview is so important, particularly when you have that massive document. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments this morning? Seeing and hearing, no, we'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the Board for Board of Supervisors matters, and begin with Mr. Ennis this morning, Mr. Ennis?
Yeah, we had a very productive Porterville Fair, I still co-chair the sales committee over there, we sell, sold over 324 animals on Saturday. Marilyn from the, our egg department was over and bought some, bought some animals, and I appreciate her and Alan Ashida and the different people from the community, but we had, we grossed about $320,000, we sold 324 animals, and we had about $115,000 in add-ons, and that's within that 320, but the way those add-ons come in is the kids writing letters about their project to people in the community, and then the community comes in and gives them 25, 50 bucks or whatever they can afford for their project, so it's the difference between a kid breaking even and not, so great program, it keeps the kids involved, keeps them out of trouble, and keeps them moving forward, so we had a very, very good sale, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashida?
I have a long list today. Tomorrow we have the Fruit and Veggie Fest in Exeter, starts at 8:30 in the morning, I believe at the State Mart parking lot, and that's where we are emphasizing the value of having fresh produce, especially local grown, and Supervisor Vandepoel and I will be there tomorrow morning. In Exeter, we also have a Relay for Life, begins on Saturday morning, and last year Exeter raised, I believe, $87,000 during their Relay of Life, they were probably, I heard they were the second largest in the state of California, and that was their first Relay for Life. Last week I had the pleasure to go to Stockton, and I took a tour of the delta, looking at flood matters, and the one thing that was important to me that I learned was that San Joaquin County, Stanislaus County are really threatened by floodwaters from the San Joaquin River. So they also support us diverting floodwaters into recharging basins, water recharge basins, and temperance flat. And we think we have problems with infrastructure, well, basically San Joaquin County is surrounded by a levee, and they have some very definite issue with compliance with the Corps of Engineers' levee standards, which are not even today solid requirements, because we were on a levee that they were repairing, stopping leaks, they took out a city park, and they still haven't got the final specifications for that levee. But beyond that, there's conflicting regulations that when they took that park out, they took the trees out and they took the grass out, they can't replace it, because there's a new standard saying that you can't have trees on a levee. So we have a real big conflict on when we go through and repair the levees... So, we have a real big conflict on when we go through and repair the levees in the delta. We had an opportunity to talk about wastewater and then there was a newspaper article today that the study came out and that wastewater, they believe, is a cause of, an added cause for the diminishing populations of trout and salmon. They figure, the figure that they used was to take one billion dollars to clean up the wastewater discharge from the counties in the delta, from the cities in the delta. We've had many conversations with the delta counties and we've also indicated to them that we do not mind spending taxpayers' one billion dollars to fix their wastewater discharge and help them out retrofitting their discharge plants, because you cannot keep taking water from the Central Valley to dilute that problem. Because if you keep taking water from the Central Valley to dilute the problem, our agricultural business in the Central Valley will not survive. So, it was very educational and I, one thing that just entered my mind, I ran across a woman from the Corps of Engineers who stated that they were going forward on the White River Project in Fraser Creek. So, we'll be having a meeting with the Corps of Engineers Supervisor Ennis and I in the first part of June to, to go on the land that's affected by it. And they're gonna come up with a new strategy on how to prevent flooding on those two streams. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeda. Scott?
I have two things. I'll be proud to represent the board on Saturday, like Mr. Klein had mentioned, at the Child Safety Fair. I'll be taking grandchildren with me and their parents to learn about child safety, which I wholeheartedly support, excited about the effort that they're doing. A lot of work has gone into this. I know they've been working on this for several months, so I look forward to that event. It's right next to Adventure Park here in Visalia. The next thing, if you have a chance to go into the CAO's boardroom, you will notice the table is completely full of paper. And we've, I want to commend our staff. The last week, we've been working on compiling a comprehensive gang assessment study for Tulare County. This will open opportunities for ourselves, as well as other entities in the county, to apply for OJJDP grant monies. The first one that, we're pushing to have this done by tomorrow, the first one will be a four-hundred thousand dollar grant that the Boys and Girls Club will apply for. But, the great thing about this document is it opens the doors and provides opportunities for other entities to apply for grants. This is a needed study, one of those things on your checklist. If you do not have this study, you cannot apply. We've checked into it. We read several other, you know, comprehensive gang assessments that were done of other counties and of others at half of states, and we're using those as a model to follow to build ours. So, we're very excited about having this document. The folks in several agencies have assisted, the District Attorney, probation, sheriff, police departments, HHSA, Tulare County Office of Education. We've had a lot of partners working with us to put this together, so it's gonna be probably not in the short timeframe. It won't be a perfect document, but it'll be a good document that we'll be able to use to assist, you know, not only ourselves, but others in the community in obtaining grant funding.
Vandepoel?
Okay, I've got a list of things too, following after Supervisor Sheeda. First of all, I'm wearing the Remember the Children tie today, and I did say that every time that I wore this tie, I would like to share some statistics about foster youth in our county. Currently, in the system, we have two hundred and forty-seven youth who have been matched with families and are going through the process of formal adoption. And we also have about twenty youth who have yet to find a family and are in need of adoption. So, the need is always there, and this also indirectly coincides with the Missing Children Week or Day that we just proclaimed, the twenty-fifth of May, I believe. And we always have to remember that there are innocent kids out there in need of a good home and in need of people who are looking out for them and their safety. So, just wanted to make mention of that. And this weekend, there's also going to be a reception honoring foster youth parents for the work that they do and the service they provide to Tulare County children. Also, wanted to congratulate Supervisor Cox, who was given an award last night from CSET. He was awarded the activist, Community Activist of the Year. Supervisor Cox, for all of his partnerships and efforts in helping better the community and working with CSET to serve the communities that they work for. So, congratulations Supervisor Cox on that. Another item that I wanted to mention was this week, Thursday, we have the Leadership Tulare Graduation, which there's another round of young leaders in the city of Tulare that are graduating the program. Obviously, they care about their city, care about their community, and want to help make it a better place. So, I commend them for spending the time to go through that program and look forward to congratulating them on Thursday at their graduation ceremony. And then the last thing is, this weekend in Exeter, or this past weekend in Exeter, was the Sequoia Foodie Fest, a very successful event. By two o'clock, they had had over twelve-hundred people go through the event. And at that event, we were also promoting our local agriculture and local-grown produce as a part of the Taste Tulare County Campaign, which we're sure looking forward to expanding. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Vandepoel. Just a few things to bring about, to talk about was, last Friday, we had seniors there at the park, and my thanks to the Health Human Services Agency for a very successful program. I believe they had almost doubled the number this year over last year. Somewhere around thirty-two hundred people were there. They ran out of food. I mean, it was just a remarkable event. So many people showed up. And great entertainment, a lot of different folks were there with booths to assist seniors particularly. And so, it was, it was a really great event. We have this annually, but I think this probably was one of the tops that we've had in the recent past. Also, we had two step-up events in District One. We had one in Goshen last Thursday. Frank Escobar spoke as a keynote speaker, well-attended, a lot of folks were out. Again, a lot of supports from county agencies and folks who are assisting in that regard as far as information and booths that were there. Then, we had a kickoff kind of a step-up event for, first time for Traver on Saturday afternoon. It went from twelve until two-thirty. Again, a lot of participation from county staff, people who were there. My thanks to the probation department for sort of spearheading that effort. And a good participation, a lot of kids and families were there and fun time had by all, and again, bringing up awareness of gang activities. And so, our step-up events continue to be well-attended and moving in the right direction. And again, my thanks to Mr. Cox and the board for supporting these events and working in a preventative way in our communities to deal with the drug problem, drug and gang problem. Well, that'll conclude our Board of Supervisors Matters, and we are, we have, we're at our nine-thirty time, but I'd like to go ahead and take care of our consent calendar. We are going to pull item number twenty from the consent calendar. It'll be off calendar. Are there any other items which board members would like to handle separately? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Have a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. And that will take us into our timed item. Our first item is item number six. This is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to deny an appeal. And it's my understanding we're gonna actually be having a request for continuance on this matter. But we'll begin with our staff presentation. Good morning.
My name is April Hill. I'm a planner, too, at County Resource Management Agency. Good to see you this morning. As you've informed the public and as the board knows from copies of the letters, the applicant has asked to continue this public hearing for several weeks to explore the issues raised by the city of Tulare and to develop a response for the board's consideration. Would you like at this time, Chairman Worthley, to consider the request to continue or, and to take public comments?
I think at this time, this is a public hearing, and so we will open the public hearing and allow anybody who wishes to address this matter this morning to do so. Then we'll continue the public hearing until a later date when we have this matter heard. So, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to address the board, this matter is encouraged to come forward at this time. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Robin Robinson, representing SA Recycling, the applicant. I'd like to first say that the scrap metal recycling industry started primarily after World War II, and has continued on since then. And just up until ten years ago, the primary recycling of scrap metal was just done in large population, populous areas, leaving the rural community to have areas of farmland that just stockpiled farm equipment and other type of equipment. Being from a, owning a small farm in Idaho, that's four hundred miles from a major processor, I see firsthand the large amounts of scrap metal that's just laying around, taking up farm space, and also not looking very good. Our company started fifteen years ago, starting up small feeder yards in the rural communities to be able to facilitate collection facilities for this material. Back fifteen years ago, no, about twelve years ago, we were able to take over the processing facility that was shut down in Bakersfield to bring it back online. So, the Central Valley here has a major processing facility that's not either in the LA area or the San Francisco area, that can facilitate the processing of scrap metal in this area. We are not a collection, we are a collection facility, but we are not a speculator, we do not buy scrap metal on speculation. Our material we bring in, we like to move as quickly as possible to our processing facilities, so then we can get it shipped off to the mills. We established our first facility here in Tulare County to service the Tulare-Vicelia area. Recently, we've just established our second collection facility over in Porterville to service that side of the, of the county. This process started well over two years ago. Every month or so, an objection would come up at which we addressed, we would like to ask for the continuance so that we could formally address the twenty-six-page appeal letter that the city has brought before, before you. So, it could be in a more formal, professional manner versus just, and that way we'd get it all done at one time versus piecemealing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this morning? Good morning.
Good morning. Members of the board, county council, Nancy Jenner, representing the city of Tulare. We have no objection to the continuance. We would request a specific date, certainly, all parties could agree to if possible. The other issue that I would like to raise, since some of the merits of the appeal were addressed by the applicant, is that this is not simply a recycling facility, this is a car-crushing facility. They are stacked, three cars high, they're crushing them on bare ground, they're not complying with their permit, and that's the, the details of these issues are what will be raised at the hearing when it's continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this this morning? If I, April, if you could come up again, we'll close the public comment period, and it will be continued to our next hearing. Do we have a date that we've talked, have you talked to the applicant about a particular date in the future?
Seven weeks.
We'd like, we would like to try to fix a date. Four weeks is a month is sufficient time. And that, ask our clerk if we're gonna be here four weeks from now. Madam clerk? June, June fifteenth? All right, so the matter will be continued at, well, entertain a motion to continue the matter to June fifteenth?
All motion that this item be continued to June fifteenth.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you all, though we'll be continued, a public hearing on this matter at that, at that time. And that will take us then to our next public hearing. Item number seven, a request from Resource Management Agency to waive the final reading and adopt an amendment to ordinance number three-five-two, section sixteen of the Tulare County zoning ordinance pertaining to establishment of a part for temporary use permits for activities lasting up to seventy-two hours and not more than four times per calendar year. Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Worthley, supervisors, Dana Metlin, I'm a planner with the Resource Management Agency. The proposal before you today is an amendment to section sixteen of the Tulare County zoning ordinance pertaining to temporary use permit. The intent of this ordinance amendment is to simplify the permitting process by providing a mechanism for the issuance of over-the-counter permits for temporary one-time-only events, such as carnivals, festivals, car shows, art shows, and other similar activities that will last no longer than seventy-two hours and occur no more than four times per calendar year on the same parcel. New definition will be added to the zoning ordinance pertaining to temporary uses. Limited review of applications by local agencies will ensure compatibility with adjacent land uses and availability of public services and infrastructure, thereby protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. The minimum criteria and findings for project approval will be that the project be exempt from CEQA, that the project have adequate land area, and the project have adequate off-street parking area, and that the project have adequate ingress and egress. Minimum compliance for project approval, signed indemnification and cost recovery agreement, clearance from consulted agencies, the implementation of the recommended conditions, and the issuance of business licenses if applicable.
Sure, I liked that part. Thought you might.
Approval, conditional approval or disapproval shall be at the discretion of the planning director and shall not require a public hearing or public notice. The planning director may require the imposition of conditions deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Some temporary uses will remain exempt from the requirements contained within the provisions of this ordinance. Garage sales, nonprofits, charities are examples of those exemptions. Those temporary use applications determined by the planning director to be incompatible with the provisions of this ordinance shall only be permitted up to the approval of a special use permit and CEQA review as described in section sixteen-two-B of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended the Board of Supervisors approve the amendment pertaining to temporary use permits at their regular meeting on February twenty-four, two thousand and ten, by resolution number eight-four-seven-eight. And staff is requesting that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed ordinance to section sixteen of the zoning ordinance pertaining to temporary use permits. And pending any questions you may have, that concludes staff's report.
Are there any questions or comments before members? Mr. Cox?
One, one comment. I know all of my fellow supervisors love hearing me say this, but while with the city of Visalia, they have an event committee to where applications are passed to a committee. The committee does all the legwork, reviews, meets once a month and reviews any events to happen, and then they make the recommendation to the planning director who would sign. I like the idea of having a committee of a clearinghouse of, of folks that would review that. I don't know if it's that intention, because you listed Sheriff Fire, on one of your PowerPoints, there was a list of, and there it is. Is, is that going to be a committee that will meet together, look at it, and clear it before it goes to the planning director to sign?
Well, we haven't completely discussed exactly whether they're going to meet in committee all at one time. We do know that they will be consulted, you know, by written form, as we do currently with the other agencies throughout the state and the county. There has been the submission of a application already, and there was a committee meeting with regard to that prior to, I guess, the putting together of this ordinance.
Just, just my, my thought for the board, and we'll leave it at that, is that if you do have a committee, you bring the permit and it's cleared quickly instead of having to pass the paper and then do all the, the follow-up work. I know that's the way the city handles it, the, all the applications for events go into one location, one time. The folks come in, they look at each permit for maybe five minutes, the decision is made, and then there's no, you know, there's no need for waiting or chasing down those pieces of paper, those applications, and getting the comments. Just a thought.
My, my only response, thought about that is that I think if we have My, my only response, thought about that is that I think if we, I'd leave that to discretion of the agencies, because I could see this being done with email very quickly, and that way the people don't necessarily have to meet together. Sometimes that can be, that can be more difficult than getting information passed through email. So, I think it'd be a situation personally that it might be good just to leave that to the discretion of the various agencies if they want to meet together. I could see advantages to doing that, but sometimes that doesn't always work out.
And I could support that. I just, I'm sure you receive the phone calls three days before the event. I don't have my permit. Why isn't RMA processing my permit? And then we have to make a phone call and find out why hasn't the permit not been processed. So, those are some of the very few phone calls I do receive is, you know, why hasn't this happened? But I'm glad to see us moving forward in an official way.
And I would just make one comment, that before the temporary use permit is approved, is there going to be a, obviously with this, if this committee does happen, there will be a review from each of these respective agencies. Is there going to be a required approval from these agencies listed before this will go forward? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm fighting a cold today, so my brain's a little slow. Don't say anything. My, my concern, maybe I missed something, is that I have my neighbors that are on five-acre parcels that have these parties all the time. Would they be able to secure a permit? I mean, these are open to the public parties. They're not private parties. Are they going to be able to secure a permit?
This temporary use permit is for up to four times per year. They would have to get a permit by they held an event, and I think if there were public complaints from some previous event that had been held on their property, we certainly would take that into consideration as to whether or not we would approve a second or a third event.
That's my number-one complaint that I get during the summer, is all these open parties on agricultural properties out in the country. And I'm real reluctant to give them an exemption.
I think that would fall more into the special use permit category for the assemblage of people.
And I, I was going to just make a comment, too, and that is that my guess is those folks are not doing anything now other than having these parties. Now, we have a vehicle in place that says, do you have this, have you gone through the process of getting your, your special use permit? Not, not, well, whatever we call this.
Temporary.
This temporary permit, it gives us, I think, a little bit better enforcement tool. And then also, the requirement that they have to have these approvals of these various agencies gives us, you know, there'll be conditions, as I understand it, if you, I would expect to have a planning, when the, when the Planning Director does do an approval, it'll be subject to the conditions that will be probably spelled out by these various individuals. So, I, I think it's actually a way of addressing the things you're talking about that right now are, are, are kind of the Wild West out there.
Well, we'll be addressing them very soon, but the, the other question I, I have is that, do we have any teeth in this ordinance if they do not comply?
Well, the teeth would be that we would not approve any further future permits.
I think Mr. Raper would like to, would like to address that matter.
Basically, if they do not comply with the ordinance, it'd be violation of the county ordinance, and therefore, code compliance would be able to go out and do the appropriate citations. So, in that sense, yes, we do. And it could be fines and penalties beyond what they want, really want to pay.
Well, that's what I'm interested in.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in addition to the administrative enforcement proceedings that Mr. Raper is discussing, it's also a misdemeanor. So, depending on the number of complaints received by law enforcement, it's possible that they could be cited, which carries potentially bail time, but certainly a fine.
Well, I also think that was the intent behind our moratorium on party barns in ag areas, and I think that, that helped a lot to alleviate a lot of those problems out there.
All right, this is about, any other comments or questions by board members? This is the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to address the board of this matters, invite to come forward and give us your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Ms. Chair, I think staff heard us loud and clear. This is a concern, and I would motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, and I want to thank the staff for bringing this forward. I think this is the kind of thing which shows initiative on our part to deal with issues. I think as Mr. Ashida brought up, these are a way of dealing with those particular issues. And speaking of the moratorium on the party barn issues, I, I don't know where we are in that process, but it would be good to know kind of where we're going with that, because some of our districts are not inundated with party barns as others are, and I have people who are frequently contacting me to ask about when they might be able to get back into that particular application process.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Nick Hahn, RMA Planning. Just a quick update status on the assemblage of people ordinance. The moratorium is set to expire, I believe, in March of 2011. The item went to the Planning Commission last week, and will continue to the Planning Commission, I believe, June 9th, at which time we anticipate we'll have a recommendation to bring forward to the board at that time.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that update. All right, at this time, then, we have one untimed item, and that is item number 21. This is also a request from Resource Management Agency to authorize amendment of the Agricultural Advisory Committee bylaws. Morning, Mr. Raper.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to the Board of Supervisors via the request of Supervisor Ashida after attending an agricultural advisory committee meeting. Basically, the dialogue was, is that they would like to have the board present and participate in the agricultural advisory committee meetings and, and/or their appointee or representative. So, in order to accomplish that, we have prepared a resolution which modifies and amends the bylaws for the agricultural advisory committee to authorize the appointment of a board member as a non-voting member and/or their appointee to attend meetings and provide a liaison and communication back to the Board of Supervisors as a whole. So, we believe it's an appropriate amendment, and we hopefully will, hopefully the Board of Supervisors will accept the amendment and approve it today. Any, any questions?
Just, just a comment, you know, I, I, I can see why we would have a board representative present in the case that someone from the board was not able to be there. I just think that the importance of this, this amendment and change is the fact that there needs to be more of a connection between the board and the Ag Advisory Committee, hopefully making a little more formal what the Ag Advisory Committee does. And so, I would strongly encourage it to be a Board of Supervisor member that's always going to be there, but I can see for the flexibility.
The reason I brought this forward was that originally, the Ag Advisory Committee
was to be an advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors. And I, I think what happened in the past, it became advisory committee to RMA, and there wasn't the communication to the Board of Supervisors. So, I think we need a more direct line to the Ag Advisory Committee on subjects they cover, because in the five-and-a-half years that I've been here, that was the first meeting that I attended on the, maybe the second one on the Ag Advisory Committee, and we have more staff at the Ag Advisory Committee than we have at the Board of Supervisors meetings sharing information.
Yes.
So, I think it's really important for us to get some of the details of some of the discussions that are happening in that committee.
Upon reviewing the, the bylaws and how the Ag Committee was formed, basically, I understand it was formed to, to be responsive to the board on issues as well as the Planning Commission, where items were referred to, the Ag Advisory Committee, they would convene, they would discuss the issues, make their recommendations to either the Planning Commission and/or the board, and it was, it was like a direction to that committee and not to have them, just to respond to certain issues. I think the role of the Ag Advisory Committee has evolved. They're more proactive on different issues. They do share information among themselves, they do discuss issues. I think on the RMA's part, we did not, did not utilize them as effectively as we could have in the past, and that's being stepped up and being much more proactive by RMA now, and including appointment of, of a chief planner to be sitting on the committee as well. It's staffed by RMA, and it's supported by RMA, and I, I believe the role is changing. And I think, as a whole, I think the board and the Agriculture Advisory Committee may want to look at the total bylaws and really look at the essence of why it was created and maybe change the role of the Ag Advisory Committee. Plus, entering our general plan implementation, I think it's more important now because we have so many agricultural issues associated with county, that they could become a much more prominent committee in advising both the Planning Commission and the board on agricultural issues. So, in my view, I see it evolving, but again, it's just one step at a time, and so this is the first step to create that communication improvement between that committee and the board and RMA, so.
Any other questions or comments? My only observation is, I think it's a good idea, but the one thing that, that the member who sits in that board has to be cautious about is conflicts and how they would be able to vote and bring matters before the Board of Supervisors, or maybe situations where that creates an issue for the person that sits on that member, even though they're not voting, they are going to be participating in discussions and so forth, I suppose. Any other questions or comments? And if not, now, there's two parts of this. One is the approval of the amendment, and there's a second part, which is the appointment of a member. We can take them separately or handle them all together.
Move approval of the amendment.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ashida, seconded by Mr. Cox for the amendment. Please cast your votes. That vote is unanimous, and we'll take up the matter of the appointment of a supervisor. Obviously, Mr. Ashida was the one who initiated this process, and that strikes me, there are probably two members on this board that would be good options. One would be Mr. Vanderpoel because of his own ag background, and Mr. Ashida because of his ag background, but I'm open to whomever would like to step forward and do this.
I think one of the discussions that I've had, I guess, with Mr. Vanderpoel and, and the Ag, some of the guys on the Ag Committee, is that it may be more valuable to have a non-ag person on that board to give a different perspective.
Well, then, in that case, it would be Mr. Cox, because you couldn't go any more to the extreme than the representative.
You know, it sounds to me like I just got tossed under a bus. If I didn't get tossed on a bus, I got tossed under a manure spread.
I nominate Supervisor Cox.
Would you be willing to do that? I'd be willing to do that.
I think that's a good point, though, Al, like you said, because as, those who are actively involved in agriculture are, are going to be more.
More aware.
Aware of what's going on, where those of us who are more of the, well, Mr. Cox.
I assure you, I would not be aware of what's going on, and I have no conflict.
So, there was, who made the motion?
I did.
The motion was by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel.
I think we need to have an alternate as well.
And I, I think the other non-farmer supervisor, Worthley, would be the good alternate.
All right.
If you would add that to your.
That's, that's part of the motion.
And I will second that motion with the.
The train has left the station, please cast your votes.
How far vote and dove does that mean?
And it was unanimous. Okay, that concludes our items on today's agenda. We have a closed session council that we need to address this morning.
Mr. Chairman, item A is off your board's closed session agenda. I would note, in regard to item E, that is a disciplinary matter in which my office secured representing the department in the underlying administrative procedure, and so, we will not be advising your board or even attending closed session regarding that matter. I, there would be an announcement out, however. So, A, B through F, and expecting an announcement.
Thank you very much. Bless you.
Hi, this is Jim Russo, County Administrative Officer, reporting out of closed session on item E to consider the disciplined dismissal or release of a public employee on a motion by Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. The board voted unanimously to uphold the Administrative Law Judge's decision regarding a deputy sheriff.